Good afternoon and welcome to Nottinghamshire Live's hustings for the Nottinghamshire County Council election on May 1st. My name is Natalie Fay and I'm the editor of Nottinghamshire Live and assistant newspaper, The Nottingham Post. Today, we're hoping to get under the skin of some local issues and find out what the candidates think. I'm joined by our agenda editor, Oliver Pridmore, who will be posing the questions to the candidates. So everyone here knows the rules of the debate, but for the benefit of the audience, each candidate will have a minute to answer questions before we move on to some debates. And hopefully, we will get a good debate going on some local issues today. We are going to close our hustings with closing statements from all the candidates. And again, these will be timed at one minute, so everyone has a fair chance to speak. Closing statements will be taken in alphabetical order by surname, but I'll be mixing up the order we answer questions in. And for you, the audience, you'll be able to leave comments on this broadcast, but we're not taking questions from the audience today. So there are 66 seats on Nottinghamshire County Council overall, and you can find a full list of the candidates where you live on our website. Today, we've invited representatives from six parties who are standing candidates across Nottinghamshire. Although Jason Sedrosny is leader of the Ashfield Independents, which itself is only standing in Ashfield, he's also been leader of the Nottinghamshire County Independent Group up until this election, which features independent councillors from across Nottinghamshire. So the five party representatives we have with us today are Kate Foal from the Labour Party, Richard Malander from the Green Party, no, sorry, Richard Malander has been unable to join us at the last minute, Sam Smith from the Conservative Party, David Watts from the Liberal Democrats, and Jason Sedrosny is from the Ashfield Independents, representing independent parties. Reform UK were also invited to send a representative, and John Dotty was initially due to attend, but the party then advised us last week they were withdrawing from the hustings due to a diary clash. We asked if they wanted to send any of their 64 other county council candidates or to send a statement instead, but unfortunately, we've not heard back from them, so they won't be represented on this hustings today. So we're now going to get on to the questions. So over to you, Ollie.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone, and thanks, everyone, for joining us. So we're going to kick off with an issue which, as I'm sure you're all well aware, is one that comes up more than most when it comes to the county council, and that is potholes. We regularly hear frustration about the state of roads from readers across the county, but £72 million is set to be invested in the highways network over the coming year. So if you took charge, what would you do to fix Nottinghamshire's roads?
And we'll start off with you, Kate, if that's okay?
That's fine. Yes, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Ollie. Well, everyone in the county only has to drive around Nottinghamshire to see the atrocious state the Tories have left the roads in. And that's what happens when you cut council budgets by over a third in 10 years. But Labour have already got to work clearing up the Tories' mess. Our Labour Mayor, Claire Ward, has given £50 million to this council in the next financial year to fix our roads and pavements, money that she secured from the Labour Government. Labour said before the general election, we would sort out our roads and fix £1 billion potholes in this parliament, and we put our money where our mouth is within year one. We're literally fixing the foundations of this country, one pothole at a time, if needs be. We know there's an awful lot of them. So if elected next week, the Labour group will work hand in hand with the Labour Government and the Labour Mayor to fix the Tories' mess in all areas of council business.
Sam, would you like to respond to that? Because Kate said she's going to fix the Tories' mess, so...
Yeah, I'd just like to remind Kate that her group voted to reduce the highways budget at our last meeting by £3.3 million. So all talk and no action from Labour, as we've seen. Under the Conservative administration, we've put record amounts of funding into repairing our roads. It was 60-odd million pounds last year, £72 million this year, across every district and area across the county. And if we get re-elected next week, we're going to put £200 million into repairing the roads. We know it's the number one priority. That's why we're getting on with it. None of this tar-out-of-the-bag nonsense that only lasts until it rains, the next rainfall. We're going a whole-street approach that includes resurfacing your road whilst we're resurfacing your road and resurfacing your pavement at the same time, and will empty your drains. That's what the Conservatives are pledging in this election, £200 million to back it up.
Jason, I could see you laughing there. Did you want to come in?
Well, look, they both sound great, don't they? But let's face it, Labour had decades of underinvestment when they ran the county council. And the Conservatives, great ideas, but they've been in charge for eight years and things have got worse. And the public know that. They're nice sandbites, but things need to actually happen. So there's no just throwing good money after bad. We need to properly resurface roads and pavements, and somebody needs to get a grip of that. Now, actually, in places like the Isle of Wight, where the independents run the council, they have properly resurfaced every single road and pavement across the island by changing the funding formula. So instead of spending year on year, they borrowed against that funding and then spent it all in one go. And now the roads are guaranteed for 40 years by the tarmac, who were the contractors. So there needs to be a different approach. You can't just keep throwing money literally in a pothole. We need to properly resurface the roads, and there is a different way of doing it. And if the independents are run, win on May 1st, independents do things with a little bit more common sense.
And Richard, I'm going to come to you. You're a bit late joining. This is Richard Malander from the Green Party, but you're with us now. Would you like us to go over the question again, or did you get it?
It sounds like it's about potholes, by the sound of it. I would guess.
If you took charge, what would you do to fix Nottinghamshire's roads?
Well, I'd make sure they were actually properly fixed, and we got the funding to be able to do that as well from central government. You know, it is amazing that strange, there's an election just happening, and suddenly there are signs up saying that the roads are going to be fixed. Well, they need to be fixed year-round, and they need to be fixed properly, and they need to be sort of properly resurfaced, not just patching up the holes left, right, and centre. And, you know, we'll get other sort of crazy things as well. So for example, where there are in places of the county where there are street trees, and if those street trees are then sort of taken out for any reason, and the little sort of build-outs are covered with tarmac, and you think, well, why is the tarmac there filling that hole where there used to be a street tree at the side of the road that's not being used to actually fill the potholes in the road? It's absolutely crazy. But it all harks back to this kind of massive underinvestment that there has been in local government for decades now. That is a thing that fundamentally needs to change. Real dedicated, long-term investment in local government so that we can actually respond to what our residents want and get things fixed, like the roads.
Thank you. And David from the Liberal Democrats will come to you for the final word on this.
Right. Well, thank you. Well, we've heard some wonderful figures being bandied about, but you only need to look at the state of the roads locally to know that money is not delivering a proper solution to fixing our potholes. So I think you treat the figures with a huge degree of skepticism. What we do need is a proper job being done so that when a road is repaired, it is properly repaired, not a quick fix that actually is going to break again almost immediately, and that the whole road is repaired. There's a road behind my house where the contractors actually drove from their depot over half a dozen major potholes to fix some others, but they left those potholes untouched. And that's just silly. Yeah, that is really bad planning. So what we actually need is a proper plan for making sure that the job is done properly, that it's done to a sufficiently high standard, and that all roads are addressed as they need to be.
Any more thoughts on that before we move on?
Can I just come in briefly there? It's a bit rich to kind of talk about Labour kind of not taking action when the Conservatives have been in power at the county council for eight years. And I mean, the amount that they're talking about in terms of putting into the budget, the £3.3 million, pales into kind of insignificance with the £50 million that Claire Ward's put in. So I think, you know, I think I was a bit unfair, Sam, to be honest.
But the system's broke, Kate, because currently, Via East Midlands run our roads and pavement repairs, and Labour and the Conservatives voted together to extend Via's contract. Now, it's not just money. Via needs roping in a bit because they're doing a bad job. So actually, both voted together to do more of the same. It might be a bit more money, but it's more of the same unless we do things differently.
Yeah, road spaces are not just for people to drive on as well. These things are a real danger and a hazard for pedestrians crossing the road. They're extremely dangerous for anybody on two wheels, any motorcyclists or any cyclists out there as well. And this expands to not just the road space itself, but the state of our pavements and our overall street scene. We need to make our streets and our roads safer for all users, and we need to sort of look at making the alternatives there in better quality so that people can, you know, walk, cycle, use other forms of transport to get around where they don't need to use a car. Because once those options are there, real meaningful options for people to use alternative forms of transport to get around, they don't need to rely on the cars so much. That will be less stress on that road surface as well. So we'll all win.
Can I just come back in on the fact that it's eight years and more of the same? It's not. Via have been told, following the cross-party highways review panel that we launched a few years ago, into change the way they are repairing the potholes. So we're doing more patch resurfacing where it's required. So where there's a cluster of potholes, instead of just filling them temporarily, which is pointless, because when next time it rains, they pop out, you'll see more resurfaced patches. And that's what we're trying to roll out right across the county. They are being rolled out in every district, and that's what the extra funding will go towards. We're doing more micro asphalting, which preserves the road surface for five or so years. We need more of that. Kate, the last Labour leader stopped that from happening. I've triggered it using the £3.3 million. I announced the roads at our February meeting that are going to get that treatment. So we're changing the way that they're being repaired, so they last longer. And people will see that on their estate. They'll see their roads being resurfaced, their pavement and their drains with the £200 million that we'll put in if we're re-elected next week.
If I can just come in there, though, Sam, the problem is that this should have been done years ago, and it's been operating for years and years, that the quality of the repairs has been really, really poor. And yet you've continued to throw money at Via, whose shareholders are saying, thank you very much, we'll take that. And Nottinghamshire people are losing out and have been losing out for years. And I'm afraid people are going to be highly skeptical of the Tories just before the election having this Damascus conversion to suddenly realise that they need to do things a different way.
Thank you. Just on the shareholders thing, I don't think people are making profit out of this. The money gets reinvested into the Via itself that do more of our road repairs, so that's where the money goes. But I think you're right. The method being used over recent times hasn't been right. That's why we did a cross-party review. That's why we came up with new methods of doing it. And residents who are watching now at home will see that their estate has been getting patch resurfacing, which is properly sealed and lasts a lot longer. We need more of that, but we also need more micro asphalting and resurfacing, and that's what the £200 million we're pledging will deliver.
Right, we are going to move on now. That was a good debate around potholes. So I think all motorists watching probably agree, we just want the roads sorted. Thank you very much. But now we're moving on to council tax. Over to you, Ollie.
Yeah, another thorny issue on council tax. We know that the cost of living crisis has seen all household bills go up significantly, and the council tax bill is one of them. The county council tax rise this year was 4.84%, just shy of the maximum amount allowed. We've seen, obviously, council tax rises across the country, primarily caused by a combination of local government underfunding and extreme pressure on essential council services. So when you think about balancing the need for revenue against the desire to reduce the tax bill for residents, would you want to try and lower council tax for Nottinghamshire residents, and how would you do it?
Richard, we'll start with you, if that's okay?
I think the thing with council taxes is that it is a mess. It's a mess everywhere. Obviously, everybody doesn't want to be paying more taxes, but we have got services that are in absolute crisis around the country. And Nottinghamshire is a place where we need to be spending on adult social care. We need to be spending on the roads, as we were just talking about. We need to be spending on a lot of the other services as well. But you can't keep lumping all this on council tax. And really, I think that what we need to be looking at is a much bigger rethinking of the way that local government is funded. It can't be just on council tax. It can't be just on local business rates as well. There has to be more of a distribution within the country. East Midlands, as an area, as a whole, historically has done very badly in terms of money that's been redistributed around the country for infrastructure, for services, and other things as well. And really, we need to be sort of saying, look, this isn't a system that's working anymore. Don't have this stupid thing where we just edge up and edge up and edge up council tax forever and a day. Let's look properly at how local government is funded. Let's reform it and make it something that works for all our residents.
Thank you. Jason?
Well, this is dead easy for me. I'm one of the only three councils in the UK that froze council tax this year in Ashfield, where we run things locally. Now, look, there is a way of doing this differently. And let me be really clear. If independents win the county council in Nottinghamshire on the 1st of May, council tax will be frozen for the next four years. Now, Labour and the Conservatives and the Single Reform Council have voted to increase everyone's tax by around £90 a year this year. There are different ways of doing it, not just dipping into people's pockets. And in Ashfield, we've done it by being businesslike. Who'd have thought the Conservatives wouldn't listen to being businesslike? But they haven't. So in Ashfield, we run services that make about £4 million a year in profit, and those profits are being recirculated to be able to freeze council tax and subsidise other things for local residents. Now, the county council have a budget that's 20 times what Ashfield District Council have. So we are able to invest in the same way, make that profit back for the council, and make sure we don't dip in people's pockets. As I say again, I'll be abundantly clear, if people vote independent on the 1st of May, your council tax will not increase.
Kate, we'll come to you then, please.
Well, I mean, yes, of course, it would be good to kind of cut council tax or freeze them. But when the council budgets are absolutely cut to the bone, and you value public service, and you value good services for our residents, which Labour really does, but under 14 years of the Tory government, the budgets were cut to the bone, and councils are forced to raise council tax in order to maintain public services. I don't see how you're going to be able to maintain public services if you freeze council tax, quite frankly, because we're going to need every penny. But what we've seen in Nottinghamshire is an extra £34 million in funding from the Labour Government. But the Tories still chose to include council tax. Can you see how bad it is for local residents? And actually, it's very close to the maximum allowed. I know Sam will come on and say it wasn't the maximum, it was any kind of pennies off the maximum. So I think that was splitting hairs a little bit. And I know none of the other parties may say this on camera, but this council has not received as much extra money as that, that £34 million from government in over a decade. There's more money now gone into the budget. We finally got a Labour Government that's committed to funding local authorities, including through multi-year settlements, which hasn't happened for an awful long time. The Conservatives have dodged that several times now. Multi-year settlements, which will allow council planning for the future, which will reduce councils' reliance on increasing council tax.
Thank you. A bit over a minute there, sorry. Sam, Conservatives criticised again by Labour. Do you want to come back on that?
We've heard a lot of words. Let me tell you what action Conservatives have taken. I've been in charge of Nottinghamshire County Council for eight years. We've never increased the council tax by the maximum. That has saved residents across Nottinghamshire £22 million in their pocket, not the council's pocket. Despite never increasing council tax by the maximum, we have increased spending on services year on year. That's spending on your libraries, on your bus services, on the roads, on adult social care and children's care. This year, we increased spending by £64 million. Again, not increasing council tax by the maximum. But you have to balance council tax against the services that residents deserve. They deserve councils that invest in their services. The council got hit with a bill of tens of millions of pounds once the Labour Government passed their budget for national insurance, which we had to find. So you can't freeze council tax when you are faced with those kind of bills. You have to find a balance. We've never increased it by the maximum, as I said. That saved £22 million, and we've been able to increase spending in services as well. That's what we would look to do, continue to increase spending in services so residents get the services they deserve. I'd like to, I'd be interested to know what the independents, what services they'd cut, what libraries they'd cut, what schools they would expand with theirs while they're setting up the businesses. It takes two years for a business to be set up, Jason, so...
Yeah, I mean, Jason, we haven't come to you, David, and we will do shortly, but Jason, you might, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, look, it's so easy. And we've been saying this for years. You can make a profit by, I mean, look, Ashfield makes profit by, we've bought buildings, we rent them out. It's dead simple. We make a profit in Scotland and Portsmouth and all of those places, and all the profit comes back into Ashfield. And actually, Sam, we've increased local services. We created the Big Spring Clean and bought back Ashfield Show and all of those things. The county can do that on a bigger scale. So we'll make a profit out of the county and use that money to subsidise services while protecting everything, shore start centres, libraries and everything else. And Sam, I'd love, after this meeting, to show you how to do it, because we're doing it here in Ashfield.
Can you do that in year one?
In year one, we could freeze council tax and not cut a single thing. And it's dead simple. We've got a system here that's doing it in Ashfield, making £4 million a year profit. I'd love to do it on the county scale.
So David, you've not had your say yet. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I suspect that the watching public are already getting fed up of Labour and the Tories blaming each other over everything. And the reality is that for a long time, local government has relied on funding from central government, which has been cut and cut and cut, really leaving councils very little option over council tax, because you either increase it or you slash services. What we're about as Liberal Democrats is providing high-quality services. Now, I'm not going to promise that we're going to cut council tax or freeze council tax. What I'm going to promise is that we will do our absolute best to fund the services that people need. If that means that we have to raise tax, then unfortunately, that is what needs to happen. If that means that we can do it more effectively, then that's what I hope will happen. I'm certainly not going to promise cutting taxes, because you have to decide which services are going to go if you cut taxes. We can't have American levels of taxation and Scandinavian levels of service, and I think people deserve a good level of service.
Thank you. Thanks. Just to respond to one of the comments that I can see has been left on the Facebook feed, someone has asked if the candidates were given the questions in advance of the hustings today. And just to make clear, no, they were not. But we did tell candidates that they'd be on local issues, so I think pretty obvious the problem was going to come. Right, has anyone got anything they want to add on council tax before we move on?
Can I just kind of say one thing? I do get this, you know, Tory and Labour having a go at each other. And I know that some people really don't like that, but I will not apologise for having a go at this awful Tory government's record. They have decimated and ununderinvested in our public services. You only have to look at the roads to remember that. So I'm making no apology for that. But yeah, I just wanted to get that pointed, so thank you.
Yeah, in fact, a wider issue than just local council tax is that the actual system is completely unfair, and council tax should be abolished and replaced by something which is much more progressive and much more unfair. But that's something that central government needs to do. We can't choose to do that on our own. But council tax always hits the poorest hardest, and it is still an unfair tax.
Right, thank you. We've also had a couple of comments saying, where are reform? Just to let you know that we did invite reform, and they pulled out in the last minute, said they couldn't make it and couldn't send a substitute, and didn't want to send a statement either in their absence, so they're not represented today, unfortunately. Right, we're moving on to the next issue. Over to you, Ollie. Big issue.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it's an issue we've covered regularly at Nottinghamshire Live and its services for children with special educational needs and disabilities, known as SEND, which are delivered by the county council in partnership with other agencies. And the 2023 Ofsted inspection found wide failings in those services, and despite improvement since then, many families still tell us that they feel they are having to fight for their children's right to an education. So how would you improve the experience of people with SEND?
David, we'll start with you, if that's okay?
Yeah, thank you. This is a matter very close to my heart. As a foster father, as a father of adopted children, I've been through this system too many times. And what families are telling you is absolutely right. You end up having to fight for every penny that your children need and that your children deserve to have. So I think some steps have been taken to make things improve, but there's still a long way to go. So we have to carry on investing in the system, making sure that we have dedicated social workers looking at children and special educational needs, and that they are properly resourced so that they can do the job that they've trained to do, that they're often very passionate about doing, and that they're not having to go into battle effectively with both hands tied behind their backs because they've got far too big a caseload, they haven't got the time to invest in children. And it is that sort of problem that leads to difficulties and sad decisions and sad cases coming through the other end of the system.
Thank you. Sam, we'll go to you next, please.
Thank you. Yeah, every child deserves access to the best possible education, and that's what Conservatives believe in. We're investing hundreds of millions of pounds into creating new SEND school places. We've delivered over 100 over the past few years right across the county. We pledged to deliver 490 by the end of next year. That includes the £30 million new SEND school that we're building in Mansfield on the former Ravensdale site. But it's not just about extra SEND school places. It's about families and children receiving the support they deserve and require. We have increased the amount of staff that are available to write education, health and care plans. But we're also putting in, we've hired, I think it's five or six SEND pathway officers. Now, their dedicated job is to answer the phone and ring families and contact families to support them through the process of applying for an education, health and care plan, but also before you get to that need, support you and families in accessing the services that they require. And that's led to, I think, 30% increase in the timeframes.
We'll go to you next, Jason, please.
Well, I think this is very simple. The local government ombudsman effectively failed Nottinghamshire County Council in the way that they can do in a very stringent way, saying, look, the county council's let down children for a long time. Some children and families are still waiting 18 months to get proper provision. And what the county council have failed to do is implement the guidelines that the local government ombudsman have set out. So it's dead simple. There's a plan there. It needs implementing. And I think there are big opportunities. I think, obviously, the elections want to have a new cabinet member for children and young people. And I think we are losing the director for young people who is retiring at the end of this year. It's an opportunity for a root and branch review to do what the local government ombudsman has said, and pick up staff morale. Staff are understaffed. We need new staff who are highly trained in the way our existing staff are, and just implement the plan. Local government ombudsman failed the county council for a reason. They set out a plan for a reason. Let's just do it. Families deserve better.
Thanks very much. Kate?
Well, I think the Conservatives should really have done much better sooner in terms of SEND services in Nottinghamshire. And okay, there's been some improvements following the inadequate judgment, but two-thirds still of our children with special education needs are still not receiving the HC plans within statutory timeframe. It is a terribly adversarial system. I absolutely agree with that one. The system is broken. It needs mending. But the majority of the children in this county are not getting the help and support they desperately need. And this is a mess created by the Tories at the county council and in government. I mean, since the general election, Labour have launched a nationwide review into SEND provision in our schools, invested an extra billion in SEND services, and provided £740 million in capital investment to create specialist places in mainstream schools. As a Labour group, we've proposed to spend millions of pounds within the council's existing budget on improving SEND provision across the county, including speech and language therapy, which comes up an awful lot on the doorstep. Labour have planned how to fix SEND services nationally and locally, and we've fixed this Tory mess before. We can fix it again. And we're absolutely right. This needs fixing. The system is broken, and I'm really glad to see the Labour Government responding to this and actually realising that we need more inclusive schools, and we need a much better system that's not broken.
And Richard Malander of the Green Party.
Yeah, I mean, it's very much, I have to say, I agree with what Jason was saying, actually. You know, the reports there from the ombudsman, we got to make sure that the recommendations that are implemented to improve the services that we got in Nottinghamshire. This does, in a way, I feel very much heart back to the previous question about council tax and that wider thing around local government funding. This is a vital part of local government. It's a service that not everybody appreciates or understands, and certainly don't appreciate the cost and the amount of time and money and investment and work that is needed to help children with special educational needs. And we need to really make that investment, make sure we're doing the right thing locally for people, making sure that services are easy to access and easily understandable for people to access as well. And this is something that has been a problem in Nottinghamshire for a long time, too long now, and we really need to fix it. And the options are there, the work, the recommendations are there, we need to implement them, and we need to be upfront with people about the cost for that.
Thank you.
Can I come in very briefly and just say, I think the key to all this is having our mainstream schools more inclusive. So our children, some of our children with SEND can actually thrive and learn and do well, actually in mainstream school with their peers. It won't be suitable for every child with SEND. Some really do need the specialist schools places, but many more of them, I think, Uh, uh, it won't be suitable for every child with SEND. Some really do need those specialist schools places, but many more of them, I think, could be happier, better, and the outcomes could be much, much better, which is odd at the moment for SEND children in mainstream schools.
Okay, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, if I can pick up on a, a point that Richard was making about the ease of being able to access services, and he's absolutely right. And I am by profession a litigation solicitor. I'm used to a good fight. But when I've been trying to access services for kids that I've been looking after, it has been so difficult that at times it's left me in tears. And, you know, I'm somebody who's got very broad shoulders and a, a real determination to see it through. There must be numerous families who just give up and suffer in silence because it is so difficult to access those services. And that's something that really does need to change very, very rapidly.
I don't think anyone would disagree. We all want better outcomes for children. It's just important how we get there, I think.
On that, on, on David's point, if I may, absolutely right, it, it can be very difficult for families, particularly if it's your first child going through it, uh, to get access to the right services. And that's why we, uh, at the county council, employ send pathway officers um, whose sole job it is, is to support families in accessing the services um, that can support them. And that's really important. Uh, just on mainstream settings, Kate, I totally agree with you. And that's why we've increased high level needs funding um, for mainstream schools, which they can access to support children in that setting. Um, but if that setting isn't right, then it is right that we have SEND school places. And that's why we're expanding and building new ones. And we've increased uh, the time scales it takes to get access to an education, health and care plan by about thirty percent. But the national average and the national target is fifty percent within twenty weeks. And that's why we need national guidance to change because that is unacceptable. Um, so we need the government to work with us, but the county council uh, is on an improvement journey and we've made huge differences, but there's lots further to do and we need national guidance to back that up.
Thank you, everybody. Right, we're going to move on to our final question now, which is something we have covered quite extensively at Nottinghamshire Live. So, Ollie.
Uh, yeah, so many watching will probably associate Nottinghamshire County Council with its historic West Bridgeford headquarters at County Hall, which we had a picture of at the start of the hustings there. But of course, a brand new HQ has just been built in Hucknall called Oak House. It was billed as a move that will save Nottinghamshire taxpayers millions over the coming years and is one that will bring services closer to those most in need. Yet with some controversy over the building cost, would you want to keep Oak House as the new council headquarters? And if not, what else would you do with it?
Uh, Jason, we'll come to you first, please.
Well, I mean, what a mess. It was first billed at eleven million pounds. I think the total costs have spiralled into twenty six point something million. And now the Labour government want to scrap all councils and merge all services. So we're likely to need more buildings in the wrong places anyway. Look, um, the independent group were about to give away Oak House to be a new medical centre for the people of Hucknall because it's ideally located, but we've now secured a different building in the town centre. I think the crucial thing is that we've spent money on that building, so it now needs to be of public use. I, I think there's loads of ways it could be invested in by having the police, medical outreach stuff, uh, other, uh, community based services in there. I mean, look, Bedford Council have just announced that they're using their buildings for a new theme park. Perhaps we could have a dinosaur museum there and put some of the Conservative councillors in there that are about to lose their seats. But look, we've spent twenty six million pounds on it. What we need to do is make it work for the community by putting proper services in there, not having a shiny new office for councillors.
Okay, um, Kate?
Yeah, I mean, Labour supported the initial plan when it was only going to be eleven, eleven million, million pounds for the Mash and the, the customer services team, uh, which would have taken them out of expensive accommodation. That seems fair enough and that could, that could still well happen. And but since then, it's spiralled into this vanity project throughout going Tory councils now costing double the original budget. And despite the massive costs, it is absolutely unfit for purpose. Um, and inaccessible, inaccessible. I mean, there's no public transport there either. And it's, and, and, you know, when we're talking about services like SEND failing so badly in Nottinghamshire, the Tory councillors decided to present all this money, this twenty three million quid of taxpayers' money on new headquarters for themselves. And the latest rumour is that some of them wanted their names carved onto the walls in Oak House to cement their legacy. So I think, and I think, and, and again, it was a real, the vanity in terms of having that last full council meeting i- i- in March at Oak House. I mean, it was, it was, it was absolutely shambles. It really was. It really wasn't ready. And I think it's right. I, I, I think, I think we could have another look at Oak House. We could sell it and, and get some valuable income from it. But we could look at both Oak House and County Hall, the two of them together and say, okay, how can these be best used for public use? And how can we perhaps get some revenue to kind of keep our services going as well? I think we could be really creative about what we do with both County Hall and Oak House. I think those two go together in terms of proposed, proposed development.
Thank you. Richard, we'll come to you.
Well, um, I've not actually visited Oak House, but I've seen, I've seen the pictures and I've seen the, uh, pictures of people wearing hard hats and things as they went there because they were claiming, I think it was the independent group saying that the building wasn't actually ready for, for, for use yet. It strikes me, we've got a brand new building there and the newer buildings can be much more efficient, uh, more, much more environmentally friendly, easier to run. I mean, if you look at a similar thing that happened in Nottingham City where they, where they built a, a new fire station. Yes, that was a big chunk of money to, uh, that, that was needed there, but the building cost something like a third of the cost of the previous one to run, something like that. I'm guessing that would be the same with, with Oak House. That said, do we need a brand new shiny sort of council chamber and all that kind of thing there? Probably not. Um, I mean, it'd make much more sense to, to use the building more widely for delivering whatever services think is most appropriate for that spot. Obviously, it's going to need better public transport by the sound of it. I had looked on Google Earth, it did look like there was meant to be a bus stop there, but I, I didn't see what services were actually going there or how often yet. Um, I might be slightly biased. I quite like County Hall, but it's only ten minutes walk from me, so, you know.
Everybody, just, just quickly, please be reassured, the one four one bus that the independent group saved does run to Oak House. So if it's used in the future, you can get there on the bus.
I didn't know Tom Smith had defected, Jason. I'll ring him up after.
Uh, Sam?
Thank you. Uh, look, Oak House was always going to be built to move services that are needed in the north of the county closer to where people need them, particularly our children and family services. Whilst Oak House was being built, the cost of maintaining and upkeeping County Hall skyrocketed because of Covid and inflation, et cetera. To remain in County Hall would cost about fifty million pounds. Now, when you're the administration, you're faced with decisions. Do you spend fifty million pounds on doing up um, a building to work from, which um, occupancy rates were quite low? Because obviously, uh, staff are working from home or on the frontline and not coming into the office as much as we used to do pre-Covid. So do you spend fifty million pounds on that or do you spend fifty million pounds on services? Why? And the Conservatives would rather spend fifty million pounds investing in bus services, libraries in every community, keeping council tax low, expanding schools, et cetera. That's the decision we've made. Um, and we will be moving from County Hall into there. Can we remain in a public building with access for the public and, and that business plan is being drawn up? But if anyone tells you they're going to sell Oak House and move back into County Hall, you need to ask them when they knock on your door. What libraries are they going to close? What schools aren't they expanding? And how much is your council tax going to go up for to fund renovated?
Delicate there for now. Okay, and David?
Yeah, I think there's two, um, separate issues here, isn't there? One is, uh, making sure that the building is used to its full potential. Um, and in Brockster, where I'm a borough councillor, our council building houses the police and citizens' advice as well as the council. And so making sure that you have a basically a one stop shop for public facilities is a really good idea. And the second question, which I, I noticed that Sam ignored altogether, is how come the costs of this have been allowed to get so completely out of control? It's now a hundred percent over budget. Uh, and that is almost certainly down to very poor planning and very poor management uh, of the construction project. The same way that HS2 was destroyed by bad management. Um, the Tories also seem to have destroyed the legacy of Oak House before it's even started.
Thanks very much. Um, so has anyone got anything they want to add to the debate before we move on to closing statements?
Yeah, absolutely. Just on this particular, on this particular thing. I mean, there's, there is the kind of the other elephant in the room here, which is the local government reorganisation that's been, you know, foisted on us by the, uh, by, by the Labour government and as continuation of the sort of thing that the Tories were doing beforehand in places, you know, like Northamptonshire. But assuming that that goes ahead, whatever the outcome is, there's going to be a fair few spare town halls knocking around the place and spare other local government buildings. So it's not like the future of Nottinghamshire is going to be short of places to hold council meetings. I'm sure we can all find the most appropriate ones to use in the future.
Just on, just on David's point about the cost, they haven't spiralled out of control and, and gone up by a hundred percent. Um, it's important to note that, um, the, uh, money to build, uh, at cast has come off a land sale. So, um, isn't affecting the, the delivery of frontland services. We can't start those rumours off, David, I'm afraid.
Well, can I just check on that? Because the original budget was eleven million and my understanding is that currently costs are running out something like twenty five million. And that is more than a hundred percent increase.
That's correct.
Sam?
Well, I, I, I don't have the figures in front of me, but, um, as I say, it's not costing, uh, frontline services. We're not having to cut services to fund that. And if we do stay in County Hall, we will have to find fifty million pounds, which would result in libraries closing and schools not being built and bus services stopping. And we're not in that game. Uh, we're in the game of investing in public services and that's what we're doing.
Right, I think we will move on to closing statements now. So thanks, everybody, for your contributions during the debate. Um, and we'll do them in alphabetical order by surname. And again, it's a minute. So Kate, we'll start with you, please.
Oh, thank, thank you. Okay. Well, all I can say to you is that if, if, if you vote Labour on May the first, we will put people first, always put people first. We value public services in a way that certainly Reform do not. That's been become very clear. And the, and the Conservatives have actually kind of decimated our public services. We really will value our public services, improve them and actually make, get the best possible value for money for our residents. Um, we would, we, uh, uh, after fourteen years of Tory austerity, it's going to be tough, but we're going to have a really good go at it if we win. We will, we, we are the only party that will deliver real change with, 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 with a Labour government and a Labour mayor for the people of Nottinghamshire.
Thank you. That was Kate Foul of the Labour Party. And next, we'll move to Richard Malinder of the Green Party.
Yeah, well, the thing that's not been mentioned, um, obviously, uh, is, is climate change and that's something that we still have to address. Regardless of all the other sort of crazy things that are happening in the world, uh, we still need to take care of our planet because that's what we live on and we are here at its behest, as it were. Um, we still need to do an awful lot to protect the environment. In Nottinghamshire, there's huge amounts that can be done. We're really, really concerned by the, uh, the, the backpedaling, uh, that we've seen from the Labour government and the massive backpedaling that we're seeing from the Conservatives as well. In Nottinghamshire though, um, Greens are standing just about everywhere across the whole county. Uh, we want to see our, um, people sort of coming forward and saying, yeah, we don't like the cuts that are being made to services nationally. We want to see people out there who are able to support the voices for people locally who are concerned about local services and are concerned about the environment as well. Um, we think that Nottinghamshire is, is best served by a mix of representatives of people representing different views from across the county, not just a big block of Labour forever fighting a big block of Tories. It doesn't help anyone. Let's get a mix of people elected, including Greens and work together for the benefit of Nottinghamshire's people.
Thanks, Richard. And Sam Smith of the Conservative Party.
Thank you. Conservative councillors right across the county have a proud track record of getting things done and delivering on the priorities of residents. And if we elected on the first of May, we will continue uh, with that with the promise of more two hundred million pounds of investment into repairing roads, pavements and drains right across the county. Libraries protected in every community, bus routes enhanced and extended, sender mainstream schools expanded and new ones built, good quality care delivered for social care and thriving youth service and investment in all our communities with capital projects right across the county, all whilst keeping council tax low. We've never increased it by the maximum before. That saved you twenty two million pounds whilst we've increased spending on services. And that's what we pledged to deliver if we elected on the first of May.
Thanks very much. And David Watts of the Liberal Democrats, please.
Yeah, thank you very much. There's three big issues that we've not really touched on, um, in this debate so far. Firstly, is putting honesty back into politics. People are fed up with politicians who say one thing and then do something else. And I'm afraid the Labour government have really contributed to that disillusionment. So we want to make sure that we are people of our word, that we stand by what we say. Uh, also, Richard's just touched on it, but we do need to make sure we protect the environment. The green belt around Brockster is precious. Uh, it's under threat from developers. It's the same in other parts of the county, so we need to protect that. And we need to make sure we keep councils local so that your local representative is somebody in your community fighting for your community. And it's not just going to be professional politicians foisted on us by central government uh, who are attacking, uh, local democracy at the moment. So those are three things that I'm passionate about, that the Lib Dems are passionate about, and we want to make sure we deliver, um, here in Nottinghamshire.
Thanks very much. And Jason Zdrosny, who is representative of independents.
Well, look, independents are standing across Nottinghamshire because they believe the way things are are not the way things have to be. They don't think it's just Tory or Labour's turn to rule and nobody thinks big party politics has done Nottinghamshire any good. And let's face it, reformer not the answer because they're packed to the rafters with the same Tory and Labour councillors uh, who think with a new badge that they can pretend that they're not part of the problem. Independents look at the facts of the matter. They use common sense and are not told what to do by party bosses. So look, across Nottinghamshire, vote for your independent candidate. Because if you want to protect and improve services, if you want to protect your green spaces, if you want to freeze council tax and if you want to resurface all our roads, then the only way to do that is by voting independent. Because they are the only people who can truly be trusted to deliver change for Nottinghamshire. On May the first, please vote independent.
Thanks very much. Well, that is just about all we've got time for today. So I just wanted to say thank you to all the candidates who came for your preparation and your time in answering all the questions. I'm sure our, our audience will really appreciate hearing from you all today. And I would just like to wish you all the best of luck with the rest of the campaigning. And of course, you will be able to get all the results first on Nottinghamshire Live. And if you buy the print edition, you can get them in the Nottingham post as well. So that's the end. Thank you very much. Goodbye.